Am I recording? Showing up there okay? Okay, all right everyone, if you're here tonight, this afternoon, thanks for coming. This is, the purpose of this meeting is to conduct open and meetings, open and public meetings training for 2018. If you're on a board, that means you have to have this training, and that's why you're here. This training will be recorded so that other members of your board can later view a video of this and receive training. And we're doing it in April so that we don't have to do it when we usually do it, which is around Thanksgiving or Christmas, when nobody has time for it. So you're required to stay awake for the first 10 minutes of this. Okay, a lot of you have heard this training and this information that I'm going to provide. If you have questions, please go ahead and ask those questions. They make it for a, make for a more lively discussion. This is kind of a dry topic, but it is important. And so I want to make sure that everybody gets their questions answered. The first thing I want to talk about is the Open and Public Meetings Act. That's a section inside the Utah Code. It's under Title 50, Chapter 52 of the Utah Code. And the very first line, the very first section in that part of the code states that "Public bodies are to take their actions and deliberations openly." So if you're on a public board or a body, that means your decisions, the things you talk about are to be done in an open and public meeting. They are not to be done at breakfast before the meeting or after the meeting. Decisions, official decisions that you take are to be done during the meeting. So that's the policy guideline there. And that's, that's really when, when courts, when judges, when the Utah Supreme Court issues decisions about the Open and Public Meetings Act, that's the first thing they look at is, well, was the body complying with the, not just the letter and intent of this law, but with the spirit of it? Were they trying to receive information in an open and public forum? Did they discuss things in an open and public forum? So let's, let's get into the details of it. There weren't, there were not many changes to the Open and Public Meetings Act during this legislative session. There was one bill that clarified that a transcript, recording, and written minutes of a closed meeting is an officially protected record under grammar. Now, the act used to just say that a recording was, a recording of a closed session was protected. They went on to, this was to clarify that minutes and a transcript of the, of the recording is also protected. I think that probably could have been implied, but they, they changed the bill just to, for the purpose of clarifying that. So there's nothing really too new about the Open and Public Meetings Act this year. A couple of things I want to highlight regarding, let's start with meeting agendas. One of the most important things to note is that when your board puts together its agenda, it is to provide reasonable specificity to notify the public as to the topics. So the purpose of having an agenda is not to be coy about what's going to go on the agenda or to simply allude to it just enough so that it doesn't alert anybody. You might be on a board that deals with something that's publicly sensitive. There might be a group in the community that you know if you're going to put that item on the agenda, they are going to come to that meeting, and they're going to look at you with angry faces, and they're not going to be happy, and they might even want to speak. Well, guess what? That's why this part is here, is to provide reasonable specificity, to alert the public as to what you're talking about. So it is not in the spirit of the law to be vague, intentionally vague on the agenda or to, or to limit your agenda item as much as possible for the sole purpose of trying to avoid or deflect public attention. Be specific. If you're, let's say you're going to talk about the watering schedule at the, at the county park. Suppose there were a county park, and we were going to talk about the times the watering took place. It would probably not be within the spirit of law simply to say, as your agenda item, "Discussion about public park." You probably need to say, "Discussion regarding watering schedule at the public park." So that's my encouragement, is be specific, be as specific as possible on your agendas to let the public know what's being discussed. Remember, one of the penalties, there are some penalties attached with the Open and Public Meetings Act. And if, if it's determined that you acted in violation of that Public Meetings Act, an act that you take can be deemed void by a court. So you don't want that to happen. Better to put the, put on the agenda what you're going to do, deal with the opposition, answer their questions, and proceed. Okay, as you know, notice is to be published on the Utah Public Notice website. Post, you need to also post your agenda at the place where the meeting will be held, and you have to give that notice to at least one newspaper of general circulation within the geographic jurisdiction in your area. Let's say there's a possibility that your meeting might go into a closed session. Are you required by law to state that you're going to go into a closed session? No, you're not. But if you know that that topic is going to lead you into a closed session, it might be best to put that on your agenda and simply say, "This item, discussion and approval of this item with a possible closed session." And we'll talk in a minute about what kind of items can go on to the closed session. But you don't have to indicate that you're going to go in, that you may go into a closed session on the agenda. What matters is that you get into the closed session by a two-thirds vote. Okay, can a member of the public raise a topic at your meeting if it's not on the agenda? Yes, but number one, you don't have to let that person, that member of the public speak at your meeting, and no action can be taken on the topic if it's not on the agenda. So let's talk about a little bit, this is not directly specific to the Open and Public Meetings Act, but who may place an item on your agenda? Typically, any board member of the board that you sit on can place an item on the agenda. Usually, your internal bylaws will state who is to prepare the agenda, who forms the agenda. You need to go through that person and put your item on there if you're on the board. Suppose another member of the board doesn't want that item on there. Can you still put it on? Yes, you don't have to vote as to what items go on the agenda. You can do that even if it upsets another public, another member of your board. Any board member can put that item on there. May the public place an item on your agenda? Are they entitled to do so? No, they're not entitled to do so. However, it's been the policy of the County Commission as long as I can remember, for example, to accommodate the public to the greatest extent possible. So, you know, Mike and Jay, you guys have been, you were on the board when I started, and when I started, it was your policy if a public, member of the public comes and wants to make a presentation or give a comment, they've been courteously, courteously allowed to do so. You can limit the time that you give them. There might be some times where you think, you know, this is just, if, if something is being placed on there simply for inflammatory reasons or to cause problems, or that just doesn't have anything to do with the functioning of your board though, you're not required to put that on the agenda. So I want to make that clear. Any questions on that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go back to the newspaper part.
Okay.
Were required to post it in a paper?
You're not, okay, good point. You're not required to publish your agenda in the newspaper. You are required to give your agenda to the newspaper. You have to give your agenda to the newspaper 24 hours before your meeting. You don't have to, now that's different, note that I'm not saying that it has to be published in the newspaper. It does not have to be published, but you have to give them the agenda 24 hours before your meeting starts. Any questions on that? Typically, now Rita has a list of all the media outlets within Carbon County. And the County Commission, for example, simply just blasts that agenda out by email to all the newspapers, to all the radio stations, and there's some others, the, any other public group that's asked to be on our list, we've just put them on the list. So Rita can give you that information if you need that, as to who to contact at the newspaper to do so. But yes, even if you're, if you're on any public board, you need to give notice to the newspaper. Weed Board, all these, any board has to go out. Restaurant, the Tourism Tax Advisory Board. That's a great question.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? But yeah, you don't have to publish your note, your agenda, just give it to them. Okay, who may speak at a meeting? Again, parliamentary procedure governs that. But typically, it's, if an audience member asks to be recognized at a meeting, it's the chair who has the discretion to recognize the audience member. And so you should always make sure the audience member states his name clearly so that it's recorded on your meeting minutes, and make sure that, if you, if you decide to let that person speak. Again, the meetings are primarily so that the board can get its business done. Meetings are not, they don't exist just so the public can come and make complaints. It's so that your board can get its meeting done. So I advise you to just use your discretion on that. Typically, it's been the custom that I've seen in, in our public meetings here in Carbon County at all the different boards I've ever gone to, that generally, if a member of the public wants to speak, they're allowed to speak if there's time, and if they, if they're not there just to be disruptive, comments are generally allowed. But that's for your board to decide. Some boards like to have a provision that says, "Public discussion" or, or simply an open, an open item where any member of the public can come and raise an item with the board. You know, each board, I think, can decide whether they want to do that, but you're not required to do that. Some problems that I see with doing that are that sometimes people show up because they think so-and-so is going to come and raise this issue at the meeting. And then you get a whole bunch of people come, and they decide to use your meeting to pick a fight or to have their argument, where the more proper procedure would be for them to call and ask if they can put that item on the agenda. So I'm not, I'm not really in favor of having an item where the public can just come and bring, bring up topics. The other thing that I think happens sometimes is, is board members get drawn into those kinds of discussions, and there's confusion as to whether the board made the decision on something that was brought up there. And sometimes a, a thought, or a recommendation, or a concern raised by a board member is interpreted by the audience as a decision or a policy, when in fact, it was just a board member kindly trying to accommodate someone who brought something up. So I'm not a big fan of having an, a section where the public can just come and, and raise, raise issues. You can do that if you want, but I personally discourage it. But it's not, it's not forbidden by the, by the Open and Public Meetings Act. What items must go on an agenda? The obvious ones, such as if you're on the Tourism Tax Board, the sole thing you're charged with doing is making a, a list of recommended expenditures of the tourism tax and the restaurant tax money. So certain boards are required to do certain things. Those things, of course, should be on your agenda. Other things, if you have, if you make ordinances, resolutions, or if you're going to make a recommendation for an ordinance or a resolution. Inter-local agreements should always go on a, on an agenda. Other things that probably should be on an agenda. Certain contracts, I think, should go on an agenda. I didn't finish my thought there, did I? That's why it's good to come to the live meeting. So contracts, if your body is going to enter into a contract and it has provisions that say you will hold harmless. Will you open that door, Scott? I think there's people that want to come in for this. So if you have an item on your agenda that says, or a contract for approval, and it has provisions that says your body will indemnify or hold harmless another, another body, or that has insurance requirements, or that have certain things that you're going to do beyond just paying money. If you're going to do something, if your body is going to do something beyond just paying money, I think that contract approval ought to be on your agenda. And then also, if it's a significant amount of money, it ought to be on the agenda. Decisions to award procurements by bidding or request for proposals. Significant purchases. Here's another one that I think is important, is policy statements or, or letters. Sometimes they, a board is asked to give a letter in support of a certain policy. And so those kinds of things should be discussed and decided upon by your body because it's possible that not everybody, not every board member on your board agrees with that policy or wants to make that same recommendation. So what may seem like a boilerplate recommendation, you shouldn't assume that it is such. So policy discussions, policy statements, statements in support of another entity's project, statements in support or in opposition to a policy. We see this a lot with the federal government, or with certain groups who advocate for certain federal policies or against federal policies. They'll want the county sometimes to make a, write a letter in support of or in opposition to a BLM regulation or ruling. Those discussions should take place in a commission meeting first. If you're selling property, granting an easement, I think also if another agency is coming to present information to you, and especially if that information might be of interest to the public, then you ought to make that body come and do that in an open and public meeting, and not just, not just treat it as an operational matter. Again, especially if the public is involved. So for example, if, say, the state of Utah is going to come and say that they're going to close a certain area of the county for hunting, for a hunting unit, right? And they just want the county commissioners to be aware of that. But they'd like all three county commissioners to be there to hear that. Well, you know, county commissioners, that, they, they all know that that's something that greatly affects our public here. So that would be an example of something that I'd recommend you put on an agenda and make them provide that information publicly. If it's, if it's more a matter of the BLM comes and says, "Hey, if you guys have concerns about our policy, we want you to direct it to this office now, rather than this office." You know, that's kind of more of an administrative type thing that I think you wouldn't have to put on an agenda. Okay, let's, what is a meeting? A meeting is the convening of a public body. And it convenes when there's a quorum of the public body, and you're discussing, receiving comments about, or acting upon a matter over which a public body has jurisdiction or advisory power. And it doesn't really matter whether you call the meeting a workshop or an executive session if you're receiving information about something or acting upon something over which you have jurisdiction. And some boards only have jurisdiction to make recommendations. But if you're hearing, receiving comments about something on which you make recommendations, that is a public meeting. And, and you need to have that advertised formally and take information formally. Remember, just because you're not taking action at a meeting, that doesn't mean that it's not a matter that needs to be on an agenda. The statute specifically says, "If you are discussing, receiving comments about a matter over which you have jurisdiction or advisory power, and you're doing that as a public body, if you're doing that as a quorum, if you're receiving those comments, you need to do that. You need to notice it up and say, 'The BLM is coming to talk to us about hunting on, on, on this mountain.'" And even though, and sometimes the BLM will say, "Gee, we don't want the public there. Gee, we don't want the whole world coming to it." Well, then the BLM needs to say, "Okay, we're going to meet with just one commissioner so that it's not a full quorum, or we're going to meet with less than a quorum of your body." But, but what I've noticed is the state, state agencies and federal agencies don't really care about the public, the Open and Public Meetings Act. And so we have to, we on those boards need to. They just assume they, that we'll march to their drums, but we have to abide by this act even if they don't think it's important. Okay, now, a meeting for the commissioners, which have both legislative and executive responsibilities, so city councils, county commissions, they have both legislative and executive responsibilities, right? They pass ordinances, that's their executive part, and they implement their own laws and things and, and ordinances, and they decide how those are fulfilled. That's their executive part. If they have both those duties, they can meet as a quorum to discuss the implementation of administrative or operational matters if those matters are matters which don't require formal action by the public body or are matters which would not become, which would not come before the public body for discussion or action. Well, what are those matters? I think the rule of thumb is, is, is your operational or administrative matter that you're going to discuss something that would affect the public. So for example, if you set, if you're going to decide that you're going to water, water your parks at, from six o'clock to 10 o'clock in the evening, that's really an administrative matter. But, you know, parks are not used primarily by county employees, but by everybody. So that would be something that you probably should say, "Hey, we're going to put this on a public agenda and let everybody know about it." So I just listed a few examples of some things which would be administrative matters which would not have to come onto an agenda. I'd say those are things like assigning jobs within a department, deciding what brand of supplies to use, scheduling decisions for the use of equipment that's owned by the county. So if two different departments need to use the same equipment, and commissioners need to mediate who's going to use which backhoe at what time, that's a logistical or scheduling decision. If they're going to perform a project at a certain time, that's probably an administrative matter that doesn't need to come before the, before the public body. But let's say you're going to close a street on one of your main roads to, to do some repairs. That probably is something that should come before you because it affects the public. I've got some other things on here, approval of minor change orders. I've got examples of operational matters that probably would come before the public body. The statute really doesn't help us a lot here, so I'm just kind of going off of, you know, I think a court would look at, is the public affected by this? How has your body made these decisions in the past? So you can look at those examples if you're interested in them. Just touch on one more thing here, emergency meetings. If you have to have an emergency meeting, you still have to have an anchor location if you can, and you have to give the best notice practicable. So if you can't give 24 hours notice to the newspaper, you still have to call the newspaper and say, "We're meeting in half an hour to discuss our emergency." Closed meetings. You cannot have a closed meeting without first starting in a properly opened, in a, in an open meeting. And to go into a closed session, you have to have a two-thirds vote. And your minutes have to reflect that there was a two-thirds vote when you go into a closed session. You can't approve an ordinance, a contract, or, or you can't make a final decision in the meeting, but you can go into the meeting to discuss those things. What are the statutory reasons for going into a meeting? If you're talking about pending or reasonably imminent litigation, if you're talking about the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, if you're talking about purchasing or selling real property, you can go into a closed meeting. What happens if you go into a closed meeting illegally? A judge may review an allegation that a meeting was closed by reviewing the minutes of the closed meeting, or I presume he could look, listen to the transcript or the recording. If he determines the meeting was illegally closed, the judge shall publicly disclose all information from the portion of the meeting that was closed illegally. Okay, remember, minutes are to be kept. You keep the date and time and record of everybody who attended. You have to record all votes individually by name. Drafts of minutes are, are not, are not subject to grammar. They cannot be, the public can't come get a draft of your minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, they're subject to grammar, but if you disclose them, they have to state that they are pending minutes and are subject to change. But they don't have to be available, you don't have to make your minutes available if they're draft minutes for 30 days. But once they're approved, they have to be available with, within three days. You have to keep your audio recordings basically forever. So your, your meetings that you record, you keep the auto, audio recordings in a format that meets long-term storage requirements. Okay, any questions?
To clarify this, submit it to the newspaper, the agenda. Does that mean the newspaper doesn't have, they don't publish it?
That's right. They don't have to. You can give your agenda to the newspaper, and you can ask them to publish it. But you know, our local newspapers need a little more lead time than 24 hours. But by statute, you're only required to give them the agenda. You're not required to publish it. You're not required to publish it.
What about the public notice official site, are you required, put it there?
What's that now?
The state, the public notice website?
Yes.
Are you required?
Yes.
By law?
Yes, by statute.
If you don't, or can you be punished? Can the organization be punished?
Yes, it's a Class B misdemeanor. If you knowingly violate this act, you know, if you don't, yeah, you can be. I doubt a court would impose that, but you intentionally don't publish your notices, yes, that, there is a penalty possible. Anything else? All right, thanks for your time. Oh, go ahead.
I'm fairly new, but it seems kind of, I guess, weird that someone can, you get a recommendation for a proposal, if someone recommended and it's seconded, it, how do you know, like, the ayes and the seconds and everything, like, is it the majority? Is it, does one has to go through? How does that all work?
You mean a vote?
Yeah.
It, it's, it has to be, all our boards are, require majority vote, basically.
So, do you, do you make sure that everybody says aye?
Yes, yes. Typically, the chairman should call for, for ayes and nays. So, if you, if you audibly hear that everyone said aye, then I, you know, I don't know that you need to call for a nay. If you're unsure, if you got a board of, say, five or seven people, then you probably ought to ask any opposed or any nays. Yes, so you should vote by aye. You can make a parliamentary motion to, to vote by raise of hands or by standing. I can't remember what that motion's called, but there is such a thing.
Christian? Typically, also whoever's the chair is will say, all those in favor, aye, all those opposed, nay, and then the chair will state, and the voting was unanimous. And if somebody wanted to abstain from the vote because they didn't want to vote, or for whatever reason, that's their chance to clarify if they said no or yes, or did they just didn't want to vote, because they can abstain from a vote. But, that way the, whoever's the board, chair will clarify, this is, it was unanimous. And if they say, no, I didn't vote, otherwise they're gonna go in with unanimous, so.
Right.
That way, it's easier for whoever's doing your minutes.
Sure. Yep, that's appropriate.
If I'm a little bit confused on do the ayes and nays, I'll go ahead and poll each one.
Very good. Okay, we're out of time, everyone. If anybody ever has a question, feel free to call me, but thank you for coming.
Get everybody to come in and take their seats. We're gonna go ahead and get started with the commission meeting. Like to welcome everybody out for our commission meeting on this, what is this, the 18th day of April? If you'll all please rise and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one on the agenda is a presentation of a plaque. Oftentimes, we have volunteers that serve on different boards in the community. The individual that will be presented tonight has been serving on one of those boards for many, many years. We appreciate the service of all those who serve on the boards. Todd, would you come up here and introduce this?
So, this plaque is for Tom Paluso, who's, if he wants to come up. He served on our planning and zoning commission, a planning commission for about seven years. We appreciate all of his service. Planning commission has a lot of work that they have to do with all the approvals of the subdivisions, codevelopment updates. And so, we just wanted to give him a plaque for his, for his service, and thanks for your, all your time and your effort on, on our board.
I've enjoyed working with planning and zoning, and if there's anything I can ever do again, please let me know, because I've lived in Carbon County all my life, except for maybe three years, and I love Carbon County and I wanna see it move ahead. All I can say is you guys did a good, made a good choice. Gary Taylor, he works for me, so indirectly he worked for the IAs, so you guys did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, we, R.D. Campbell, he was on our board too. He's had a family emergency, he wasn't able to make it. He served on the board for about 16 years. And Don Torgerson, who served on the board for, I believe it was 12 years. He's had another work conflict, so wasn't able here, but we appreciate their service and their dedication for, on our planning commission, so.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. First is March 7th.
Commissioners, I didn't see anything to change or, or that was omitted. I don't know if you had any changes?
I don't.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and second that.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Yeah, our next set of minutes is the March 21st set of minutes.
I didn't have any changes in that one. I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number three on the agenda, consideration of possible approval of a resolution 2018-4 approving Carbon, approving county's intention to apply for grant funding, funds for Utah Indigent Defense Commission and committing to meeting the IDC's minimum principles for effective present, representation. Christian?
Commissioners, you're aware that we have selected new public defenders as of March, and you're aware of the need that we have to supplement our budget in order to pay for that. In conjunction with the selection of these new public defenders, as you recall, part of the reason why we did so is, we only had two applications, but one of the applications provided for three public defenders to come. We realized that this was going to be, or you realized that this was going to be an improvement in the ability of the services that could be rendered to indigent defendants within Carbon County and that there would be more attorneys able to handle the ever-increasing workload. Unfortunately, that has substantially cut into the budget. In fact, the requirement to pay for these new public defenders is beyond what our budget has. Our budget does not have sufficient funding to come close to paying what we need to pay them. So, we do need to get some grant funding. The Indigent Defense Commission of Utah has funding to provide and will provide that provided the county agrees to meet the minimum principles that it considers necessary for effective representation. All of those are set forth in this, in this resolution, and they involve the attorneys having, being free and independent to work and represent their defendant clients in the best manner they deem possible without interference from the county or the county prosecutor's office. It allows, it recognizes that clients are best served if their attorneys can specialize in the type of defense law they're providing. It provides for them to be represented by attorneys who are free of conflicts of interest and provides that we will closely monitor their caseload to make sure that the attorneys are not overwhelmed with the number of cases that they're handling so that they can give each client sufficient time and representation needed. So, by signing, by agreeing to this resolution, we commit to abide by those principles and try to implement them to the extent possible in our selection of contracts, contractors, and in the way we write our contracts.
Okay, do we have any questions, commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
I should point out, though, this resolution is required as part of our grant application. That's probably the, maybe the first and only thing I should've said, but that's the point of it.
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, I'd just throw out that we, you know, are always trying to accomplish those things that we're required to accomplish, we're always trying, always trying to improve our services, and with budgetary restraints and different things, sometimes we, we need to get creative and we need to find other, other funding mechanisms, synergistic relationships and the like to make things happen. And so, making this application is, is critical. As Christian says, it doesn't, ourselves, with what we have budgeted, we won't come close or near to what is required to provide these services for public defender, but with a successful application on this grant, then likely we can provide that type of service to our community and fulfill our obligations as far as health, safety, and welfare of those that live here. So, I, I'm very excited for this application and I hope that it goes through and is successful.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Commissioner, before we jump right into item number four, Steve Maxfield is gonna be here, he's not here at the moment. I was wondering if we could touch on items 12, 13, and 14 before we hit number four, and that kind of will lead into number four?
Do we, do we need Steve for IT, or what are we, what are we after?
For IT, yes, there's a little presentation, some pictures, some different things that we wanted to throw up. We, we could go on without, other than 12, 13, and 14 are actually very short items and wouldn't, wouldn't really delay us very long.
It would take a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Just a little update on the past motocross event that we had this last weekend. They, they had, how would you say, this motocross series, it has been 12 years since they've been to Carbon County. And so, it was quite encouraging that they showed interest this year in reaching out and discussing with them the different opportunities. They wanted to do an early race, which has a lot of difficulties attached to it. An early race, oftentimes you haven't had a lot of water on the grounds, you haven't had a lot of prep work done because it's one of the first races of the season. And in fact, we had several issues with some broken sprinklers. We also had issues with being able to use the canal water with broken pumps, and then some, some culinary issues with praway, just as everybody else is currently experiencing as well. But, we were able to band together, we had some community support, some volunteers from the public that helped us water with the water hoses, and we ended up with a very good event. This promoter paid the high school swim team and some other local individuals to help flag for the event. And so, not only was there an economic impact through the hotels and restaurants and all the people that were here for three days, and some of that stayed for a fourth day, but also we, we had some of our, our local youth benefit by being there and supporting the event. I, I believe, and perhaps someone in the audience can tell me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was that he was gonna pay them $1,000 for the, for the two days of flagging that they did. And so, and, and maybe that $1,000 didn't go all towards them, but there were various youth groups that were helping support the event. We had, with, with all the challenges and obstacles, we, we ended up with a very good event. Saturday was the, sorry, Sunday had the best weather and things moved forward very well there. And so, I just wanted to provide a little update on that. At the same time, at the North Springs Shooting Range, we had four different groups over the weekend. And one of the groups had some international shooters, and not, not to, not to get everybody scared or anything, but one of the shooters was from Syria. So, our, our range is getting some international recognition. And we, we also had a, a shooting group out of Salt Lake come and do a competition. Then we had our local Castle Action Shooting League on Saturday. And even with the wind and different things, the, the Saturday, Sunday events went off very well. And it was a good weekend for finances out of the range. That's the update that we have for item number 12.
Okay. Item number 13?
Just a little update for talent-ready Utah grants. Our area has been the recipient on a few different occasions. In fact, Pinnacle, which is the charter school here in town, has coordinated and, and built has coordinated and, and built a relationship with the hospital. They submitted an, an application for some seed money, so to speak, to start a, a new pathway. Their students can graduate with an associate's degree and have an emphasis in the medical field wherein they can intern and apprentice at the hospital and get on a fast track to get in their CNA. And some of them can actually get that at the same time that they graduate with their associate's degree from high school and be well on their way to fulfilling the requirements for an RN. And so it's an integrated streamlined process. They're having a lot of success. Because they were able to get that, that funding for the, the teachers and the equipment, everything they needed for, for Pinnacle, they were able to get an additional grant and are applying now for a third, and it's very exciting. I, I, this update is today because at the, on the twenty-seventh of this month is the next deadline for, for Talent Ready Utah Grants. And I just want to throw it out there, if anybody has, any of the employers out there are considering doing an apprenticeship and internship, you need to coordinate with the educational institution, both higher education, post-secondary, and some of that can be made possible. There are some proposals being made that include some restructuring all the way down as far as the seventh grade, enable to, well, basically enable these students to be on a pathway into some of the local employers. One of the difficulties we have locally, we, we actually have several job positions open here locally in our community that are going unfilled because there is a gap between education and training and what the employers need these students, these, these applicants to have in order to hire them. So to fill that gap, that's why some of these CTE programs are being restructured so that they can streamline into the workforce, streamline students and eligible candidates in the workforce. And so that, that's the important update there with the Talent Ready Utah Grants.
And as part of the motion, item number fourteen is discuss, discussion on chart, on the charting of local area career pathways board.
Correct. Now, this is not an action item for us. This is a state level thing that's going on. I sit on the state level Department of Workforce Services Development Board. That development board will be ideally passing a motion in their next quarterly meeting, which will charter or allow for the chartering of a career pathways board in each community that houses a one-stop shop. Now, the one-stop shop process is something that we started last year and Price Utah was the first DWS office to have that process where they basically went through the workflow and initiated everything that they needed to in order to, all these different departments that then fell under the wings of DWS, Adult Services, Volk Rehab and all these other things, to streamline the processes so that when somebody walks through the door, they get the help that they need. And they get handed off to the right specialists that can help them with, with all of those different services. So as a next step following up to that, there's a career pathways board that will help people do exactly what Pinnacle and Mark Holook with the hospital are doing right now with different vocations inside each community. We're fortunate enough, and partially because I serve on this state board, Price Utah will be the first location that we will have a local career pathways board, after which it'll be Logan and then Provo. And so it's very exciting and that's here coming up. I will be part of the selection, I'll be part of the selection committee in finding locals from this community that can help make that happen. There'll be a board of eight people total. And so just for those employers out there and those educators and those people interested in helping fulfill, especially those people who have experience in HR, that'll be coming in the next two to three months.
Okay. Jumping back, we'll keep going with the agenda. Item number four, discussion regarding possible expansion of Energy Days. Proposed Fourth of July Weekend itinerary and August Carbon County Fair, including a detailed cost analysis, estimate, excuse me, estimated revenues and county employees require to prepare venues and staff each event.
And Mr. Chair, I wonder if we, we shouldn't also just read through five and six because they kind of all go together?
I think, well, I think we need to have the discussion on this because item number six is consideration and possible approval of changes to the Fourth of July and county fair events, so.
Right. Yeah, no, no, just reading through them so that people understand for the conversation. Would you like me to take the lead on this?
Item number six, review and possible approval of a contract for Fourth of July Weekend Event. That was the entertainment that would possibly happen that weekend. The, the, the discussion needs to be, what are the projected costs? What, what, what are, what is going to be needed to pull off these events? I've heard through word of mouth that you're including Road Shop into some of these work hours, knowing that it is, that they will be in the middle of the chipping season. So I, I, this is just so that we can get everybody on the same page.
So Commissioner Hopes to help address this item. We have Kara Hillam, Valerie Marietti, and my mind just escapes me, Rachel Crumple to help, help speak to these items. Also, they have provided a lot of those details for you in this packet. As, as far as your concerns with the Road Shop, we did reach out to the supervisor of the Road Shop, Daniel Campbell, with some suggestions on what to do about a stage in the arena. The only other time that we've done a stage that I can remember in the arena was during the energy event a year or two ago, I think two years ago. And I don't think we want to do our stage that we have that we typically use in the event center. Daniel Campbell threw out an amazing idea of being able to bring in three gooseneck trailers that the county has available, available and building a, an ad hoc stage on top of that. We were working with Don Johnson as well, who is the safety person, to verify with our insurance that that would be kosher and not have any issues. That would limit the amount of prep time necessary for the event and would help it all speed right along. But before we jump right into all those particulars, let me talk about the events and, and why we're doing them and what, what's really going on. As, as far as budgets, we, we have kind of a, a summer budget for different events, different fair-like events. And in Frank's proposal at the end of last year's budget, he proposed adding more venues, adding more events and adding more. He even has a Billy Dean concert and a few other things listed there that he proposed to us back in the fall. But what we're looking to do here revolves around two specific groups and helps us increase the economic impact of tourism and visitors to our area who will be purchasing and helps us dramatically by capitalizing on events that people are already here for. The Fourth of July, through Kara and Christie, we, we have recognized that they bring in around five thousand people for a three-hour event on the Fourth. That's one of the larger events that we have here in the county. And so in conjunction with that, we've been working with some groups and we have here present today, Steve and Donald, who are with our entertainers. They also will be able to speak a little bit later when it comes to item number six. But they, they have been very good to work with in coordinating the, the ability for us to pull off Energy Days in conjunction with this, what we want to call Warrior Days. And that's, that's the first time that we're, we've been announcing it publicly. Warrior Days will, it, it, kind of a slogan going behind it and help you understand why we want to call it Warrior Days is because it's those who've been to battle helping those who battle every day. And so we're combining a patriotic time with those veterans and those special needs individuals. Those special needs individuals who battle every day and those veterans who've served, who've been to battle. And so this is a very special event. We're incorporating a, an amazing first, first time Harley Davidson ride from Tempe and Nogus all the way down to the fairgrounds. And this is a fundraiser for the Angel of Hope series, well, well fundraiser. And just as a, as a big highlight, we're gonna have events from the Fourth with, with Energy Days. We're gonna have some food vendors, that's gonna be new. We're gonna have a carnival all four days. We're gonna have some bull riding events. We're gonna have some mounted shooting. We're gonna have a movie night in the soccer field. We're gonna have a foam dance in the barn. We're gonna have a motocross race on Saturday that ends just in time for the three-band concert that, that we have organized. And it's all very exciting because at, at the end of the day, you're gonna ask, well, what does it cost? And, you know, it, it's, it's actually very touching to realize that this event at this time, how many people are donating their services? That to pull off an event like this would cost Duchenne County or Euenta County sixty thousand dollars. But we're gonna do it all within the budget that we have for the summer, for all the normal activities that we've had that has already been trimmed down and approved last fall. And so it, it, it's very exciting. As far as coordinating county employees, the way we have it scheduled out right now, the employees that typically take those days off can still take those days off. We, we have it all coordinated to where, with a few volunteers and with the employees that we currently have on staff and with very minor support from the Road Shop in just bringing in those three gooseneck trailers, we can pull off a motocross event. In the roping arena, they're gonna have some roping events. In the, in the large arena, they're gonna utilize just a small portion of it the day before for a bull event and then prep work to clear it out and install this, these three goosenecks with a stage. And, and could there be hiccups? There could be hiccups. But as of right now, it seems like it's all coming together. We've got a professional MC who is known. He's actually from the valley. When I say the valley, the Castle Valley. Monroe Magnuson, did I say his name right? And he brings a draw. Some of the events we are having are intentional to bring a very large draw from Emery County to our county. The judges for the bulls event are donating their time. We have a sponsor who's paying half the cost of the mini bulls. We have sponsors who are paying for a lot of the different things that we have going on. Some of the, some of the costs associated with all of this, we have the entertainers. The entertainers alone, I don't know how, how on earth we can get the, the names that we're not able to announce at this moment, but how we can get them here for seventy-five hundred dollars. And we're getting three bands. Now, to add to that, we have to get some lighting and some sound equipment and a variety of other things that are associated with putting on a concert. The nice thing is, is that we're getting three bands to play during one event. And so there's some cost savings in the fact that we don't have to pay three different times for lights and, and the sound system and all of that stuff. Total cost for all of that will be around fifteen thousand dollars. The fireworks that we always pay for, and that also includes the carnival, I apologize. So not only are we getting three performances, three bands, sound equipment, light equipment, we're also getting a carnival for four days during events at which we have the largest attendance in the county so that we can benefit the very most to help keep them here perhaps a few days longer and then bring in a complete other attraction and crowd. We've got a crowd coming, you know, for the motocross event. And Barry has all of this set up. You know, and if Steve were here, I'd actually show this presentation of some of the stuff that Frank's done over the years. Not only should we be focused on meeting our costs and bringing in revenue, but what can we be doing for charity and fundraiser events? Because the MC, one of his primary duties at a lot of these events will be to promote Angel of Hope. And with Barry, we're trying to get it all integrated where people can be donating from their cellphone throughout the day as they're hearing about it, as they're listening to it, as they feel moved by it, as they see this, we're gonna have kind of a, not, not a Special Olympics, but kind of a, a rodeo special on, on Saturday for those who have special needs. And it's the high school rodeo team. They do this at Nationals. They're gonna do it here for our local with the Castle Valley Center and, and a lot of the other people who are perhaps too old to attend the Castle Valley Center or for whatever reason they don't. We're gonna be bringing in all those kids. The performers will be performing not only for veterans in the crowd, but for the special needs kids in the crowd. And whether it's at the bulls event, whether it's at the carnival, whether it's at the Fourth of July or whether it's at the concert, we'll be raising money for the Angel of Hope program. And that's something that Frank always tried to do. He always tried to synergize when there's a group of people, a crowd of individuals, what charity, what fundraiser, what, what group of high school students can we also benefit at the same time? And so that's, that's kind of the, all the events in a nutshell, those are the big item costs. Everything is spread out evenly enough that we can actually make the personnel that we have work and the volunteers that we have help us prep the grounds and, and get everything ready.
I have some questions just starting off. The first one is more kind of a comment than it is a question. The Energy Days has been a great event for many years and the reason typically why that's a great event is it's a free event. Now you're going from a free event to a pay-to-play event. And there is the free event on the, on the, on that day, but there are also pay-to-play, the concerts not free. Correct me if I'm wrong. You have to pay to go to the concert. You have to pay to ride the carnival ride. You have to pay to do these things. It draws people to those events.
Commissioner Hopes, if you'd like us to do it for free, we just have to amend the budget.
I, I'm not saying that you have to do it for free, but you're, you're making a lot of assertions and claims that you're going to draw these people for four days to, to gather all this money. The reason why they came for Energy Days is because there was provided free hot dogs for that day and free food and carnival rides, or not carnival rides. There was, there was things that they could attend that were free. Are you still going to keep all those people for four days to be able? That's just a question that I have. The other thing that I, this is a competing event, not this year, but on other years with Pleasant Valley Days, which is another one of our communities that, that, that is their big weekend, is Fourth of July. They've done it for years and years and years. And I know it's always competed a little bit with Energy Days, but there, that in itself is a large draw as well. So what, what will happen on those weekends where your Energy Days slash Carbon Fair imposes on those weekends? And the other one is, the county fair was typically created to...
Now, Commissioner, this is not the county fair. This is a different event altogether.
So, but you, that's not what you've told me in the past. You told me that we're combining county fair with Energy Days.
So i- i- in a way, the funding that we have...
So you're taking all the funding?
Not all the funding, no. Nope. A, a lot of the events that we do for the county fair will still be there. In fact, the county fair will be more robust than it has been in the past and we still plan to do it all under budget. What we're doing here is a fair-like event. I say fair-like event because it's where the community's coming together. There's gonna be animals there. There's gonna be motocross. There's gonna be concerts. And that's typically what you see in any community in regards to a fair or one thing or another. But there's still gonna be some August events in regards to a fair. But would you mind?
The reason why I state that is, that is not what has been presented to the public in the la, in, in our meetings. You said at the Republican County Convention that we are combining the Carbon County Fair with Energy Days. That was your statement.
Well, let me make a public statement right now and let you know that we will be doing both events.
Okay. And, and, and the reason why I state that is the county fair has a specific reason. For those kids that raise livestock, that is their opportunity. The reason why you hold a county fair is to draw ki, draw people to come see their animals, to see what they've grown in their gardens for vegetables, the, the quilts that they've made. So that's, that's, I, I just wanted to point that out. We, we still need to maintain that draw for those kids that put in the effort all year to be able to show their animals, to show their vegetables, their fruits. I'm not saying that this isn't a bad idea. I'm just, I think there's things that need to be discussed and talked about. Commissioner Potter, you had some other questions?
I really, I really did because, you know, one of them, when we first started talking was that there wouldn't... I really, I really did because, you know, one of them, when we first started talking was that there wouldn't be anything in August. And I met with the Extension Office and talked about what does what does that uh fair really need to look like? It's it's not in a convenient date because of other community events, but that is when fairs are held. And so, yeah, there are a number of things that should be and could be changed in regards to an August planned event. But um that's only one thing that we left them out of this conversation to begin with. And those monies that are allocated there, the forty thousand dollars that is in the budget, will only go so far. And maybe while those are specific for that event and we have other line items for labor and so forth, I really think that um you're misjudging the capacity of the equipment and the personnel we have to pull off a four-day event with the number of grooming and so forth, having worked with the fairgrounds for a number of years. You talk about a motocross race, uh you're talking two days plus to get a ta- uh track into track uh race-ready condition. And at the same time, you want arenas groomed, you want all these other things. And so I just don't believe that uh the costs have been counted on equipment, personnel and so forth. And and I appreciate the information that's coming in late here, but again, I don't see any total on what really the cost is of of making the change here. I'm not for not expanding it, but I am, you know, pretty sure that the Fourth of July, the Energy Days, the five thousand that come are probably the majority of them are local, there may be some that come down because of that event. But um this this is, you know, come to us in a roundabout way. I'm grateful for your volunteers, but uh there are, there are a number of other questions that I have in regards to that.
Well, there's been several questions, and interestingly enough, I've already previously addressed some of them with you guys. But I would love for this committee that's helping put this on to come and address them, if if you would allow for that, Mr. Chair.
I would allow for that, yes.
Okay, so Rachel and and Kara and Val, if you guys would come and maybe just talk about the Fourth of July, the the people who show up and what we wanna do to draw a larger crowd. And um just, you know, some of the questions, I've got a list going in in case we need to repeat them.
Well, hopefully we can address some of your concerns, and I have the same concerns as well. So let me just back up a little teeny bit, and on the very first page that we gave you, oh Kara Hillen. Um is the purpose of the event? And it's to attract local residents, visitors, and all individuals whose lifestyles and ideas supported southeastern Utah's commu- community. And furthermore, to help diversify our economy and provide the county with extra tax revenue from outside dollars that otherwise might not be developed. And okay, when we talked about who comes to Energy Days, the majority of people, it's because of it's a free event, very true, hundred percent true.
I think that was Kara's biggest concern all along is that same
How, yes, it has been, however, during some planning meetings that we've had, we're starting to see it come together with bringing in these different groups such as a motocross, it doesn't just bring a couple families, it brings a large portion. Um having the bull riding event, that has not been here for so long, that brings another entire entity here. Then we're having the P S P Y S A soccer tournament, that brings a completely different diversity of people. So yet Oh, the mounted shooting, and their barrel racing. Right.
I have some questions about the mountain shooting, so when we get to that point.
So no, we were kind of in the same boat, wondering if this was gonna happen, but as we've been starting to plan it, we can start to see where things are pulling together. The other thing is, a big concern I had from the very beginning was how in the world do we staff this, I mean, come on. But the volunteers are kind of coming in and it's even some of the people are cutting their fees, cutting their costs, they're saying a biggest thing concern we had was, can you bring the staff with you, can you bring the judges, can you, we don't have that to offer.
And they wanna keep stuff going in Carbon County.
It is happening.
Rachel, we can close your the mic and
Yeah, we wanna promote our facility and our fairgrounds and our arena and our events here.
Yeah, it's surprising that they are willing to work with us.
Stock contractors, they're cutting their fees in half or less.
Yeah.
Plus actually taking care of ticket sales and the judges and everything that kind of orchestrates putting on these events. Um a lot of people sacrificing their time just to assist with these kid rodeos and the special needs, you know, non-life stock Olympics that we're gonna put on and um you know, i- i- it's been overwhelming with generous
What other, what other major events do you have going on in the state that are gonna be competing with these with these events? I mean, eh you're you're talking about a rodeo. Obviously, the days of twenty forty, uh days of forty-seven is on the twenty-fourth of July, but there are other large major events that are happening on the same weekend, on on this same week. Are we going to get the draw on the riders? For example, the bulls, are we gonna get the riders to 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 have enough?
They're trying to talk us into doubling, I wanted to do with the light bulls, because we have mini bulls already booked, they already have a mini bull competition field. Um trying to still work on the mutton busting, I have a sponsor for, they started doing goat roping, I guess is a big thing, I'm not familiar with these kind of entities, but putting them together, everybody's already pretty much booked themselves and the events, they're taking care of their own events um with sponsorship, um and then with the the large bulls, because we have some of the best of the best, it's considered Cowboy Christmas during this weekend and which is a bull riding, it's not an actual full-on rodeo. Um the stock contractor, you know, if they get bucked off at Fiesta Days in Spanish Fork, they're gonna drive an hour to come down here to this eliminator pan. Um we probably have the added money as a sponsorship, I'm pretty sure from one of the viewerships. Um and then they're cutting their costs in half plus providing the entire event.
Amazing for what they're bringing.
But we'll still get all beer concessions, um everything else, and still trying to coordinate, maybe even a having the bar and twenty percent of everything going back to the county in that aspect as well.
And that's another thing.
And providing family passes for, so they don't have to say, well, I can afford the concert or I can afford this bull event and dance. Um trying to provide family passes to get a family in for the entire week of events.
Okay. And just to clarify, I mean, I don't know, i- it almost felt a little tense, almost hostile there for a moment, but a lot of the questions that you're asking are really good questions. And uh i- it's hitting the nail right on the head on the same questions that as as an ad hoc Warriors Days Committee, we 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 were asking as well, a- and we were finding solutions to. Uh just as Kara mentioned, you know, we don't have the personnel to do a lot of this, but can you bring the personnel with you? And in in the end, we become more of a just a facilities management group where everybody else is putting on their events and we're coordinating them so that they don't interfere with each other, but that they have a synergistic effect. Um the the bull riders, the contestants that wanna come down, a lot of them, yes, have events in other cities. But that actually makes it better for them because they wanna do their event and then they wanna drive down here, they wanna compete here, and then they spend the night and drive back. And that was something that we didn't realize at first until we asked that question.
But I think I think you missed the point of that is that it's one thing to get riders here, it's another thing to get people in the stands. That's where the money comes from, yeah, the riders will draw if they have a following. And bulls are obviously more popular than a full rodeo. But the real question is, is who will you get there on the weekend when there are other events going on because it is the Fourth of July? And it will be a long weekend.
And you're right, and that's why, you know, really time is of the essence here, and that's kind of why we're here, because we understand the need to have an aggressive advertising packer. Package that has to be out, and not only to our locals, but outside of the area.
And that that was also
You know, another, one other thing that I wanted to really say is, when we started planning this, I thought there is no way that we could do it on that kind of a budget, I mean, come on, that's not even attainable. But in the past, when we've done fairs or something, we put the money out, but yet as a county, we talk about bringing diversifying and bringing revenue to our area, we have found opportunities to actually bring some money back in, so we're not just giving it all out. Yeah, who knows how it's gonna work, this is kind of the test pilot year, but things kind of are starting to pull together where we can say, look, our goal is, let's get the people here, let's show that Eastern Utah can have we have the great facility for it and we can have events in here and get us on the map for it.
And as far as
Kind of baby step to diversifying a little bit.
And and I don't think Schofield doesn't do fireworks.
They do fireworks, they do fireworks.
That's an interesting thing, uh last year was the first year that we were in direct competition, it was on a Saturday. And I didn't know if that would affect us at all or turnout, and it did not. They still had theirs, we still had ours, they're getting a lot of people from the valley um down at Pleasant Valley Days, and we're getting more of, I guess, the locals. But but we didn't see a short change in that last year.
And now Kara
A lot of people that we're tying in with this, the the announcer, the Monroe Magnuson, he's impacted, one of his best friends is Senator David Heekins. Um really good impacted in Emery County, and he does this all over the western United States. The bull producer Diamond H is all over the western United States, so they're bringing in Steve, our entertainment package, he's everywhere. He's impacted everywhere, but we ha- we have, you know, people putting on this stuff are actually advertising for us as well at at their organizations throughout the next several months to put this together.
So part of facilitating and allowing these groups to come in, they're doing a lot of their own promoting.
They are.
But in addition Kara, in addition to getting a huge crowd from Emery and and south up here, um you you started investigating some outside advertising. And and I believe you've had some initial conversations, could you tell us a little bit about how we can draw folks from the Wasatch front here?
And this is an excellent, this happened really good. Okay, so we can get, we have the opportunity to have a billboard right on I fifteen, right between Provo and Orem. And if you look, there is actually a map with the picture in it. Um we've been able to negotiate, and they're only holding this at first until tomorrow, because we already lost one good spot, but this spot is really excellent. Anyway, it's, the billboard itself is a north-facing, but it's if you're coming south, so you're coming into the Carbon County area. It's this page right here that you're looking at. There's over one million through thirty-nine impressions weekly on this. We've never had a billboard like that kind of represent this area. And so if we can kind of work and get something like that, we're looking at about eight, one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars per month. And we would propose that we have it up between May first and July fourth, and then there's a five hundred dollar vinyl and installation fee. But that will hit more views and impressions than anything that we've done.
And didn't you mention you found a sponsor for the vinyl? Maybe? Or or a potential sponsor?
I I'm not sure on that one, we're still kind of working on
So is that coming out of the the budget that was proposed for the year, or are you asking for additional funds for that?
This advertising outside of the area budget would
Would, we were asking for funds for our own tourism.
So so there are a couple things, and and I know that I'm the one, when we've talked before, that I'm really not trying to kill this, but I am, Commissioner Mallard, discouraged because of where you have taken this. Number one, you talk about a contract with a billboard company. Or did we not just go through open and public uh meeting training where all contracts have to be approved by the commission?
Well, I'm not in a contract. It's, uh we just did some research to find how much it would cost and if it was available and
But if it's only available till tomorrow, how do we get a contract approved? So
That's just to let them know, are we interested or are we not?
So the thing is, is that all, every one of these things that we're talking about have to go through that proper channel. And so we should have been working on this long time ago, or even planning on it for, you know, next year. Because some of the things that you're asking, a couple of things I'm not willing to do is, one, I'm not willing to break the laws of the state of Utah or of Carbon County to pull off an event.
Well, and we've never asked you to.
I'll let, I'll let you know when I'm done.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. But I'm also not interested in changing budgets because of where we are on a budget stand. We had a budget meeting today, and believe me, there isn't any extra money on this. And so that's why I want a detailed listing of what it's going to cost, what the employment side of it is, and what those uh costs for the equipment are to, and now I'm done, Commissioner.
Okay, yeah, no, and I was just gonna reiterate that we'd never ask you to break the law, we'd uh definitely wanna make sure that everything was on up and up. These people before entering into a contract, just like we do with Lantus on the fireworks, we uh reserve a spot just verbally.
Right.
There's no contract in place.
Or they'll sell it to somebody else, I mean, these go fast.
But but they also
Such a prime location. It it did, yeah, we had another one, it was gone, and I'm like, please, just hold it until Thursday, it just, I mean, I don't have to tell them, I can say, no, we're not doing it.
And and so all they need is a verbal confirmation that, you know, we're going to consider it, that we're going to possibly put it on a future agenda and uh, you know, from there. And it's the same thing with Lantus fireworks, we we told them, hey, we're probably gonna do the same thing that we did last year. Would you uh please re- reserve that, whatever, and we'll present probably in May, like we did last year in May, um the contract for the fireworks and review review that in a public meeting, like is the process. And so um I appreciate the the uh the attention that we're getting just to make sure that everything is transparent, everything follows the rules.
But I just, I just have one thing and then I'm done to say, um you know, I'm just kind of basically volunteering my time on this. And the reason why, yeah, we all are, and we've invested a lot. But I wanna be really clear on this, if it happens or it doesn't happen, and I think today's a great day to decide, because if it isn't gonna happen, it's okay. Like, let's let, let's back up if it isn't, but you know, I've tried to look objectively at all the avenues to say, is this a good thing, is it bad value, can stay in budget, can we not? I have done events, I know how expensive they are, and I really had my doubts at first. But in the bottom line, this event, I can see benefits, I can see economic benefits that our area needs. And we talk about not amending the budget, but we gotta make some baby steps somewhere. And to me, this was a little step in the right direction. But i- if, I mean, if we don't want to do that, that's okay, but my purpose in moving forward and donating my time and resources is, I need us to work together. I want us on the same page, we will fail if we try and do this alone. But if we can assist every single person and get everybody excited and involved, then we have a chance of it being successful. But that's, that's all I have to say.
Hi, can I just say one thing, my name's Valerie Marietti. I got involved in this because of the Angel of Hope statue, I'm helping with that fundraiser. Um how it ended up being tied in with Energy Days is, we have a Harley-Davidson ride that's starting in Linden that will end in Carbon County on that Saturday, that same weekend. I emailed all of the commissioners, Jake emailed me back and said, hey, this may tie in with that same weekend. So I have, uh Tim Panokas Harley is doing all the registration, they're giving a free pancake breakfast. They have their Central Utah Hog Riders Organization are all gonna be in it um along with their advertising on their own website at no charge to us, um and bringing all of these Harley riders here. So, you know, that's of no cost to anyone other than, you know, Harley's doing this for us, and they're they're offering to do it annually. The special needs rodeo that we talked about um will be free to the county. All of it will be volunteers, um people that normally work with special needs people. My son's organization, Team Jace, will be sponsoring all of the trophies and ribbons and all of the little prizes that these handicap people get. And I don't know if you know, but there's not a lot available for all of the people in our community that either have a special latched child or are a special needs adult. They're not included in so, most of the things that we do, they're left out. This is a way of including them, showing our community that these people are important to us. And um I just wanted to say that I everything that we've done has been at no cost to the county. We are, we are, um like Jake said, we are having so many people that are being so generous to us and providing things like advertising, everything from posters and um, you know, like I said, Harley's doing their website for us for free. I would really like to improve our community. I would like to provide opportunities for the kind of people in our community that just don't have a lot of options. My son lived this big, huge life. He went places and did things and did all these really great things because, for one reason, because we live in a great community. But a lot of these people, they don't have the support system my son had, and they're not living a very big life. And that, I think, is a failure on our part. And I hope at some point that I I'm an accountant, I know money, I get, when there's no money, there's no money, I get that. But I also believe that priorities and supporting our community needs to be somewhere towards the top of our priority list. I'm not someone that shops on a credit card, never in my life, I'm somebody that I try very hard to use my personal budget, you know, but there are little ways that we can improve our community and not necessarily with money. Just putting your support somewhere. We're having a dinner on May tenth at the Tuscan, Tony Bassel donated the Tuscan to us for free. Jeff Killband is playing for free. This is something that's gonna bring a statue here that we truly need. We've had a lot of negative in our community, and I think most people, but people that don't live here especially, do not see the good of our area, I do. I've lived here most of my life. I love it here, we live in a place where people care, people wanna support you, people will help, people will vol- will volunteer. And that gives us opportunities that a lot of places don't have. And I hope that you guys can And I hope that you guys can look at this situation and see the value of it and not necessarily just the cost. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you. Commissioner Mallard, I als- just having, being this, all of this fairly new, um, information, uh, I have another, uh, concern. Lunch with the vets at the Senior Center. Do we have, there has to be, if you're going to try and have lunch at the Senior Center, we need some way of identifying how many people are going to be at that event so that the prep can happen. Um, that, that's one, one more thing that I've noticed on, on, as we start moving through this. Also, who, at what cost do we, do we provide that, that meal with the vets?
So, uh, that, that particular item is subject to change. It may be just a barbecue out at the pavilion, and, um, the vets themselves will be feeding, how'd you say, you know, some of the different associations will be providing the meals and different things. Um, though we would be interested in, in seeing if we couldn't coordinate with the Senior Center and make that happen. Um, again, not everything's dialed down at this moment, but-
It's just a matter of logistics. That's, that's all I'm asking is, a lot of this information is brand new. I haven't seen everything. Um, like I said, the first time I heard about this was at the convention when you announced it to the public. I, I don't, I don't know that there's been a whole lot of discussion with those, with the commission about what's going on or what your proposal is, and- and that makes it very difficult to make a decision. We don't know, we still don't have numbers on, on what you're spending.
Well, Commissioner Hope's-
What costs on what things?
No, no, you're fine. Uh, uh, here's the thing, um, you know, w- we do all of this during budget season and we approve a budget. And the only things that we really need to make a decision on is, there's a request out there for travel and tourism dollars for a billboard, for bringing in people from outside the area. There's a contract for entertainers. Um, and there, there might be one or two other things out there for decisions, but those are the, the high level things that we, we, we need to bring to this meeting for a decision. Um, as far as planning summer events, I, I don't know that the commission's ever been so interested in, in what my, uh, rec department's doing for summer events.
Every contract that has ever come across-
Every contract, uh, entertainment, there's a contract. You know, if we do a billboard, that's a contract. Um, but, but as far as having, having lunch under the pavilion or coordinating with you outside of this meeting on a, uh, you know, can we do this at the Senior Center or whatever? Those, those are just details that, that can be worked out.
Okay.
You know?
It, it would be nice to know those details as we move forward.
For sure.
Um, and, and not find out from public, hey, what's happening here, what's do, what's, what's this about, and not having any answers.
Yeah, well, I, you know, and we still have, uh, two, three months before the event. A lot to do, and yes, in a perfect world, we would be planning this November, December for, for July. Um, but in an effort with, with Frank, who's, who's not able to assist us personally and everything else, we are working really hard to try and make this all happen, um, understaffed, and, uh, you know, still provide the facilities to the community and encourage them to host events. And that's, that's largely what's going on here, is us encouraging, um, different folks here in the community to put on events and to benefit from that. Um, the cornhole, uh, games this year, you know, we've had different people put it on during the county fair, but during this, uh, you know, July event, um, the high school, there's some high school groups who want to do it as an ongoing fundraiser, and they, they wanna build them in, in woodshop class and different things. So there's a lot of coordination going on, a lot of moving pieces, a lot of details to still figure out. But as far as, you know, what we need to consider is, what are we going to lose if we don't do this event during the July fourth week? There, there's a goal for the Angel of Hope statue. It, it costs a lot of money, um, and the foundation. There's all the tourism that we could be bringing. There's tens and thousands of dollars to our community that we could benefit from, plus, plus providing good events, good wholesome events, movie night out in the soccer field, you know, the foam dance and, uh, you know, the, the three band concert. All of these things are good for our community, e- especially where we have a carnival, a- and all of this where, where people are donating so much of their time just to make it happen. Not just their time, their services, um, and everything else, as has already been mentioned. And so I, in my opinion, I feel like we, we stand more to lose by not doing this than what it'll cost us to put it on. And of course, we'll keep everything under budget to address those concerns and issues.
You know, Mr. Chair, I, I guess there are a couple of things that, that as we go forward with these discussions is, is, one, we may have assignments within respective departments within the county, but you don't own them. You don't own those facilities, you don't have the right to bypass this commission in any way, shape, or form. And in the future, I would ask that those things be brought in advance, and that we have those discussions well in advance of, of something like this coming out. And the second point that I would, would like to close with is that if this goes forward, I hope that the same kind of review that you're receiving or that you're giving us is reported back as having been very, very good for the community. I know that there are startup costs and things on any event, and that doesn't mean we shouldn't try, but I would expect that there will be a report back on really what was accomplished. And to the, to the item about the Harley, uh, ride and the Angel of Hope, I look at the Friday or the Saturday schedule that you provided, and I don't know, a- and I don't have enough information, again, because this was just handed to us, but I don't know that, are they coming specifically because this is an event, or would they have been becoming, been coming because they were going to do the fundraiser for the statue? I don't know that. And so those are all things that, you know, you bring in, um, that are very good for this community, that are, that opportunity. As I've stated before, tourism is always lacking. Um, in the twenty-five years I was in the hotel business, my business was based on commercial Monday through Thursday. I'm not saying that can't change, but I am just saying that I am, I'm still concerned that we're not counting the cost, and I would love to have a, a further review on that later on.
Okay. Do you have any more questions, Mr. Chair?
I do not.
Okay. Well, very, very excited for the possibilities. Of course, there'll be more discussion, and I think this is a good icebreaker so that going forward, we can have, um, how would you say, more, with more anticipation, some of these discussions.
Okay. Item number five, consideration of possible approval of changes to the Fourth of July and Carbon County Fair events. Commissioners, I, I don't know where you stand. Without having more information, I'm, I'm not, me personally, I'm not ready to make a decision on yes or no. I don't know where everyone else.
I, I, I'm still confused as to what decisions need to be made by the commission on this item. The, 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 we're just putting on events like the rec department's supposed to do. Um, you know, a- as far as decisions being made, we have contract decisions on whether or not we want to, uh, pay different groups for entertainment, for fireworks, and for all of that stuff.
I think one of the concerns was whether or not, uh, was the moving of the Carbon County Fair date.
And so the Carbon County Fair is still in August. Um, so that discussion, we haven't even broached yet, which maybe we should broach it right now.
So what funds will be left over to, to put on a Carbon County Fair if we use all of this for Energy Days?
Yeah, so-
Or Warrior Days.
H- h- historically, the, the fireworks expense and everything else, a- again, we've got a fair budget for the summer. And from that fair budget, we've always spent ten thousand dollars for fireworks for Energy Days in July. And we've spent some of the budget for various other events throughout. It hasn't all been for any particular three days, though a large amount of it has been. Um, there has been a, a, a bulk of it of sorts that has gone towards the August event. We, we do have some conversations that need to continue forward in regards to wh- what we all want to do in August. And, uh, several people have told me that they would really like the dates to be moved back to the dates they were last year, um, which was the middle of August. And, uh, you know, those discussions are still ongoing. And so there's still a budget that's available. We're, we're not robbing the whole thing. Um, you know, we're putting on events throughout the summer, just like that budget's been used for historically.
But like I said before, this is all new information, that this is not the county fair now because that's what was being portrayed to the public. That's why this was put on the agenda.
Yeah, well, I, I, I would like some support in putting out the right message, 'cause I have identified to both of you that, um, we would be doing the fair as well, um, right after that night when we spoke.
So that, that just came forward in this meeting. The last time we spoke, you said you were gonna do this as the county fair, and then you were gonna hold a separate event that would suffice for the county fair, is what you told me.
Okay, so there's an August event, and we're gonna call it a fair. There's the July event, we're gonna call it Warrior Days.
Okay. Um, so there's no, uh, changing of the county fair? So there's no, uh-
No, no action item there.
No action item there. Item number six, review on possible approval of a contract for Fourth of July week event, um, entertainment. Jake.
We, we have Steve and Donald here with the entertainers. I don't know, Donald, if you'd like to talk to the contract?
Hello, Commissioners.
Hello.
Pleasure to be here. Um, this was pretty much news to me, but I've been listening with interest in just a couple of observations, if I may. Um, my partner, Steve, and I, and I'm Don Dalton, for your, for your records, sorry. We've been doing this for a great number of years. I grew up in the music business and, um, it's, uh, something we do frankly out of love, more than, more than money. But, um, a couple of observations, I mean, if there's one thing I know, bikers will go to live music events even if they have to pay. I own four motorcycles myself and ride them constantly, and I, I participate in these kind of organized rides. And if you've got a bunch of bikers riding in from Timpanogus on a Saturday, that's gonna be a big part of your audience for a paid show. And the second part of it, uh, uh, just an observation, is the, the national talent that, uh, we are talking about, and of course, we can't mention it until, um, it's been approved. Uh, I just happened to notice you're calling this event Warrior Days, and we happen, we've worked with this, uh, gentleman before. And, um, I'm very happy to say he's a big supporter of veterans. And so, I mean, if you're looking for some synergistic element to there, I can assure you, that's gonna be it, and all we have to do is let him know what this is all about, and it'll help round it out. But other than that, I know, you, you, I, I actually also am very sensitive to the concerns I've, I've heard expressed by you two gentlemen, because I, I understand what it's like to get hit with this all new. Um, it's nothing new for me. Uh, we have been, again, I've said this, we've been running these events for many, many years. We put them in fields, we put them in parking lots, we put them everywhere, and it's, it's just been incredibly successful all these years. But we feel really good about the, the lineup that we have brought to you, and I don't mind telling you that one of the things we've done is, uh, we've agreed to add a second act within our budget. Uh, we, we will cover that, because we wanna see this succeed. And we look to the, to the long term. That's, that's frankly the kind of relationship that we like to have, so. Um, I am here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the, the, the budget, what we are offering, our three bands, stage, sound, and lights, uh, in that, it within a, what we call a turnkey kind of an arrangement. Yes, please?
The, the stage that was proposed of pulling three trailers, I've seen it before. Will that, three flat deck trailers, does that accommodate your need? Is there any other special things that have to be done? Do you have to screw plywood on there to kind of create it uh, a flatter surface across there? Um, wh- what would you be requesting of a stage that was set up on those trailers?
We provide that. We, we're providing that within our budget. Stage, sound, and lights. Literally the stage. We, we have to have a certain kind of stage.
'Cause I, in the conversation we had before, the, if this is the one that's going in the arena-
I heard that, and I was a little confused, Commissioner, myself. I-
So am I.
We have a portable, uh, stage.
Okay.
I mean, it's, and it's, it's world-class. It's the kind of thing we have to have for national music acts, and it, it's, we can put it anywhere, in the middle of a rodeo arena, anywhere you want, but it's, I do-
No, no, that's great news. The less we have to do, the less we have to do, the better. So that's great news. Thank you.
So within our, within our, our contract, we're providing the stage.
So, so as far as preparation, if you've had an arena that's been set up for a rodeo, do you have to have compacting? Do you have to have anything else in that? Can you just set it up in the loose, the till dirt, whatever it might be?
What I would suggest, I'm Steve Nono, by the way, thank you. What I would suggest is having a, having a light water truck go over that field. That's what we've done, like Don's saying, we've done so many county fairs and so many city events and, and everything else. So if we could have a water truck go over there, the stage will be in place. Uh, but just to keep the dust down and everything, if something did happen. But I've, I've heard all the, um, I've been listening and, and understanding, we talked about, and I think you guys have done a fantastic job, by the way, with your details and everything, at least the stuff to us. I feel like you guys are really on the ball for a new committee. I feel like you guys have done a good job. I've been really impressed with some of the advanced questions that they've asked about the music stuff, about advertising, how to sell packages, how to do stuff. And I brought bands down here to Price before at the Tuscan Center and sold out the Tuscan Center many times and, and everything with guys like Ty Herndon and Billy Dean and Quiet Riot and stuff like that. And, um, I've been around the city days and stuff down here with doing different things to, to see what happens. And you were asking about the Fourth of July weekend. Now, the Fourth of July, they have Stadium of Fire up there, which I've been involved with several times. Now, that concert is on the Fourth of July. So that isn't on the seventh. They do that on the Fourth of July, and, and at least that's my understanding, they're doing it again this year. They've always done that. So, and then you have like Oakley Days with the rodeo, and, and you have some different stuff up in Davis County and stuff like that, 'cause we've been contacted out by some of the committees, and I know Mount Pleasant has the, has the rendezvous days and stuff like that. But as far as bringing in the national act and what that does, now, you guys just had Sawyer Brown down here. And there's a great company out of Richfield that brings in the concerts and stuff over there that Frank's talked to me about and so forth, and they're doing a great job. But I think that shows the interest of people coming into the area when you bring a band like Sawyer Brown into Price. And my understanding was that was sold out.
Yes, and about, oh, thirty-five percent of the attendees were from out of town. They were actually followers of Sawyer Brown.
That is correct. That is correct. And I know, I know Mark, and Mark, and I know Colin, their manager, really well.
And we, we sold out two days prior to the event.
That, and, and we've done big events in fields. We brought in fifteen, I mean, we brought in just a ton of people with three-day events and everything else. So the travel aspect of that with people coming in, and Don's hit it right on the head. I've helped Mark Cabell with his, uh, um, Ride for Life and everything, and, and the Harley rides, we've had Harley rides come out to different festivals and stuff. And that dimension that it brings to bring people in is very big. So, I mean, that's a, that's a big event that you guys are doing. And that'll bring families in, and, and the concerts with having the kind of acts that we're talking about, I know David Howard Bellamy really well, and they played down here a while ago, and I've had the Bellamy's here. I mean, you bring in the bigger acts, people will follow them. And the Fourth of July will be winding down. Now, there's gonna be some rodeos, there's gonna be some stuff out there on the sixth and the seventh. Um, but as far as the Fourth, a lot of those activities are winding down. And so the shows, the concerts, the fireworks, stuff like that, if you put on events after, like the bike racing and stuff like that, and all of my marketing and everything I've done on big shows, and I, Don and I did the Olympics up in Salt Lake. We brought in three major venues in the Olympics and did all the marketing and a lot of stuff up there. And we've done big motorcycle rallies and, and what have you. What is going on here with bringing in the different entities of what they're bringing in, and especially if you guys can get sponsors? Especially if you guys can get sponsors to feed that? That is a, those are great revenue sources coming in, especially if you could get them funded and everything else to bring it in, 'cause people will come for the concert, they'll come for the bike ride, they'll come for the motorcycle rally and everything else. I mean, it's just gonna bring, bring people in from the tourism. And that's what I think is trying to be accomplished here, is bringing people in from outside the community to see how pretty it is and, and see the events down here. And I've done the county fairs enough, I know a lot of the struggles, maybe I'm talking too much, but I know the county fair isn't well, as well attended as they'd like to see it. And we've brought music into Duchesne County Fair, Uwena. I mean, we've brought them into a lot of county fairs around, and, and I know that, uh, this might be just another event to bring people down here and show them how beautiful the county really is, and show them what it has to offer.
One, one other officer, is Commissioner Hoops?
Hoops.
Oh, sorry. Um, you know, I, I share your, your comment about the events having been for, I mean, this is all news to me, of course, but, you know, the, the one thing I would, I would observe and have, when you throw it and act like the one we're talking about with the supporting act along with it, I, I, my experience is, folks don't like paying for it. I don't know what the ticket prices are gonna be, and that, that's a way to adjust it. But most folks, you know, they, they don't begrudge paying for talent of, of that bill.
Right.
You know, it's not earned aid, if somebody like that routes through this, this part of the country. So that, that's only, that's the other observation that I have. We, we just wanted to say to you that, that this works only if-
We, we just wanted to say to you that, that this works only if it works and, and that's what we're trying to uh, bring here and support you with it. And we feel really good about the package that we're on.
One of the things that we have to look at is, is what does it cost to put on the show? From the county standpoint, how many employees, what are we, wh- what, what does it take to pull off an event? Because it's not, I mean, we have to have county employees there. And then who takes the ticket sales? Who takes the alcohol sales? Who takes? A lot of times that's not the county. So we put on these great events and, and it's the promoter that takes home, so like we had a motocross this last weekend. There was a lot more money spent out by the county than we brought in.
Okay.
You guys are getting all the ticket sales, all beer sales, all parking.
See, and, and that's, that's, those are some of the details.
Right.
I don't have.
I get you, but I'm just telling the facts.
Or, or, or I didn't know if those detail, or if that, if the ticket sales were going to, cause obvi- most of the time they go to the promoter, whoever's putting on the rodeo, whoever's doing whatever. Um, a- and that's how they sell the event. That's how they make their money to be able to put on the event. Like the promoter out there doing the racetrack or, or the race this weekend. He got all the money for the registrations. He got the ticket sales to come into, to watch the event. But the labor was the counties to put the event on. Right.
No, in this respect, these are the kind of deals that we like to do.
So, so those are some of the things that when we say is, is, it's a great event, yes, there are, there are indirect benefits. People are gonna stay in our hotels, they're gonna come spend money here. But the, the cost to the county to put these events on is not insignificant. It, it can be major. Especially if we're working through the night and we're pulling other crews in to, to put on these events. And that's, those are some of the, the details that I was trying to help flush out and get answers to so that we don't put everything out there and, and.
No, I don't doubt that. I'm just trying to give you as many ans- I know you're.
I know.
This on the fly like this, but I would say just, just, you know, in what I know about facility and everything else, I think the county would be quite, quite upset. You're selling tickets, you keep a hundred percent of the uh, concessions, a hundred percent. We don't share in that at all.
Basically, yeah, basically what we're doing is we're just bringing in soundstage lights. We're making the best production available. And we've got a major act that normally charges as much as what we're doing the whole show for as a favor. Cause we've been in the industry so long. So we've got a major, major act that is coming into this stuff that.
Let me address Commissioners, you know, security. I mean, you've got a closed facility as I understand it. I mean, we, we've done Duchesne County many, many years and that makes it pretty easy. If you, you only have a couple of points of access and you have ticket takers there obviously. I'm trying to help you understand logistically what you're looking at. Production wise, it's all on us. We, we handle the entire production. You know, the way I like to say it Commissioner is, is, you know, we, we start at the edge of the stage back and everything is ours. Um, but in this particular sense, you folks would be providing the security and whatever uh, personnel you need to take tickets and, and, and beyond that.
Marketing and, and stuff like that that, that we can help with, but marketing the event and, and getting it out there and, and so forth, but.
Steve knows more about marketing than I'll ever know. And he's already been uh, communicating with Commissioner Mallor and some of these nice ladies here about how to do it. We're happy to help you in terms of that. But trying to give you an answer to your question, that's the biggest issue. I don't know where folks park there. You might have some parking maintenance to do, but you know, honestly, there's just not a lot of personnel. I don't know about the cost to the county, but I can just say in terms of bodies, you know, and you probably can get off duty uh, current county sheriffs. They always like to make a little question, you know. Well, we hire them too, you know, for a group event. Beyond that, I, personnel wise, can you think of anything?
No, you just need ticket takers and you need some security and, and uh.
And it wasn't pointed so much just at this, but the entire weekend. There, there's a lot of logistical things that, right, so. Um, Christian, have you had an opportunity to review the contract?
Uh, so it says producer will receive twenty percent of all sponsor funds paid to purchaser by producer. Sponsor funds are what? Explain that to me.
Sure, uh, a, a car dealership, uh, you know, a private entity that is willing to put their name on an event and if they just, they're just handing. Your county attorney, right?
Oh, yeah, Deputy County Attorney. So, okay. So. So who goes and tracks down the sponsors? That's the county who does that, right?
Let me make it clear that that is only sponsor funds that we raise. In other words, you, you all might find your own sponsor funds and we keep a hundred percent of that. But if we bring you uh, sponsor funds, a very standard provision of these kinds of deals, we can take a hundred percent of that and then give you the rest.
Yeah, if I could interject, that's what we do. We have, we have like a contract that goes out to a lot of the festival committees and stuff like that. And a lot of them want us to go to say like Coca-Cola or Ford or Pepsi or something like that. And so if we're gonna go out and do the work with the bodies or that are putting on the festival, we take twenty percent of that if they want us to go out and try and get like for Toby Keith, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Ford to, for a sponsorship or some of the bigger events. I mean, if that was to be put in play, we would ask twenty percent of the sponsorships money back for our time and everything. Now, we've, we haven't been asked to do that with the sponsorship, cause I think you have an, an amazing group down here that is getting it done.
Okay.
But if you wanted to strike that provision, it doesn't.
Well, I'm not against it. I just wanna make sure I understood it. That, that was all. Uh, it also says the uh, the fee is seventy-five hundred dollars, uh, which is to be paid at the time of the execution of the agreement. Then down below, it talks about cancellation. It says uh, if the event is canceled by the producer at any time prior to the event, purchasers shall be entitled to a refund of the deposit, but no other compensation or damage. I take it to mean the, is the deposit, is the term deposit the same as the term fee? In other words, if we're talking, so if we pay you seventy-five hundred dollars and whatever, for whatever reason it has to cancel other than weather, uh, then we get that seventy-five hundred back. Is that correct?
As we cancel. Then, you know, it's never happened to us, but occasionally an artist will force majeure, they'll, they'll pull force majeure on us. And they'll cancel through no fault of ours, but then we would.
Then you kick, okay.
We have to cancel.
Okay, I just wanna make sure those were the, and then on the uh, if, if there was any ever, ever any action to enforce the terms of this agreement, would you guys be willing to change that provision to?
Then you, sure.
To uh, Carbon County's court.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I don't, I don't mind at all.
Okay, I think that answers my questions Commissioner. Um, uh, let's see. Just so you're aware Commissioners, it does state that um, we waive and release, if, if you sign this, you would waive and release uh, these gentlemen for any and all claims, including claims of indemnity or subrogation or for any other liability. So it would just rest on our insurance at that point. Um, but I do like the fact it doesn't ask us to indemnify them, which is always.
I try to make, thank you.
I like that part.
Glad you saw that.
So.
That is rather normal in this business.
Yes, so.
I'm gonna impose that upon you.
So given, given that that's my understanding of the contract and that we could change the uh, forum location, I don't have any legal concerns with the contract. Yes, uh-huh, yep. That's right.
Commissioners, we have a.
Can I just point out their time, and, and again, I apologize because I understand that, well, at least the two of you are getting hit with this rather fresh. We, we have this artist commitment for this date. Um, in fact, there's this artist contract, which I have not signed yet because I can't commit until we know that we're in. We got ten days. I just wanted you to know. I apologize. I know that you're getting hit with a lot. But I need to explain that and, you know, if, if we push this out too much longer, uh, this gentleman's gonna wanna take another day. Just wanted to.
So, so we got a little preview there. That's a gentleman.
We could, we could play, you know.
He looks like.
There's a hat.
Where's a cowboy hat?
How about that?
There's a few rock stars that wear cowboy hats, so.
And you said he was very patriotic, so.
He's very patriotic. We've worked with him a couple of times and the guy is just amazing. I mean, he is a perfect fit for us. And we had another act that we were talking to and she called, I was in Vegas doing some other work.
Was it she?
And she called up and her manager nixed the deal, cause she's getting married. And uh, so.
Ten days, imagine that.
We got this as a favor, cause we've worked with these guys so long. This guy is normally more than everything we're doing here. This is a major favor to come in. This is a big act.
Well, his booking people felt badly about it.
Yeah.
His, his, his name alone will bring a large crowd.
It's a big name.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioners, go ahead.
Rachel was bringing up, the guy is extremely family friendly. Last time we had him, there was a soldier that had died in Vernal. Uh, that had been killed and he has to have their whole family backstage and has to do a luncheon with that family before. I mean, this guy is a very, very patriotic. He's played at the White House. I mean, this guy is very, very patriotic.
So if you're catching all the clues.
And it, yep.
Played in Vernal, played in the White House.
But uh.
Gentleman.
Great guy, great guy. Once, once you hear the name, you'll understand. So.
Um, so we have a contract Commissioners. Is there any other questions? Any concerns with the contract?
I don't have any concerns. I'd uh, like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for, thank you for being here.
No, no, not until they do the paperwork. So we, they gotta get.
The contract, if it's.
You've got all the clues you need.
Oh, then go ahead.
All right.
Yes.
So, hey, Don. Don, we'll let the cat out of the bag. Contract's done, right?
Yes, Daryl Worley.
Daryl Worley. Saying, have you forgotten and?
Have you forgotten, yeah.
Daryl Worley, he did the big song after nine eleven that was, he what?
That's all the ladies care about.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Item number uh, thank you. Item number, where are we at? Seven. Are we on, yes, we're on item number seven. Uh, review of county policy regarding requirements for all volunteers. Um, Commissioners, this, this is in the county policy. There is uh, this is not a new, as far as I'm concerned, this is not a new, this is something that's currently in place.
Absolutely. Uh, this has been in place. The, the last iteration of the policy was in November and that was only to change that the place where you register and the office that controls volunteers is our personnel department.
Ladies, before you leave.
Before you leave.
You wanna hear this.
You need to come back in.
Yeah, it, it's in, been in place for several years, in fact, the substance of it.
Okay. Um, I know that Rose would take some time to uh, talk on a couple of things. But I think it's important for the organizers of any and all events that you understand what the volunteer program is. Because we did not follow that this last weekend with the motocross race. So. I don't know if you want to cover that or if you want me to have Rose or if you want me to take it.
Maybe I'll give it.
On the agenda.
Should I start Rose and you can fill in the gaps? So anytime, our, our, our policy says that if you're going to use volunteers, they need to first come in and register with, with the county. They need to come into Rose's office and register. And we perform, basically, we, we treat them the same as if they were coming in for a job interview. So uh, in a lot of situations, we ask them to take a drug screen panel. If they're gonna be using any of our equipment, if they're gonna be working with kids, we get a background check on them. Um, we provide, we make sure they've been trained and provides, provided with some basic safety training as well with respect to the particular area where they're going to work. And then we let them know that whenever they show up on site, whichever department they're coming in to work for, they need to sign a register or a log, or they need to come and log in with Rose. Um, and they need to, they need to register when they come in to provide their time and their hours, so that we have a record of when they were there and what they were doing. So Rose, I don't know if you wanna add anymore about who has to take the tests, drug tests and get a background check, but and a physical to make sure they. So they need to come in before they do any work at all, ever, as a volunteer. Um, that's not, and really that's because of Utah law. That's not us being tough on them. Uh, Utah state law says we are to maintain that log and that register and we need to know and be aware of who's volunteering for us.
So really the reason why this is important, if you're hosting your own event out there and you have volunteers doing your event, correct me if I'm wrong Christian, that's not what we're talking about. But if you have volunteers that are performing county functions that we would normally pay a county employee to do, they have to go through the process of, of becoming a volunteer, get the background check, do the drug test. If they're going to be running any machines or doing anything of, of, of maybe a, a uh,
You know, if they're gonna operate a county system.
They need to be certified and trained on that, so that, that way we know that they're competent to be able to run the machine that they're going to be run, running. Um, as was stated, that did not happen in this last weekend. And we, we just wanna make it clear that as we move forward with this event or any other events, if we're going to have volunteers, we have several volunteers that are have already been trained, are, are already part of the volunteer system, um, to be able to run the equipment um, to, to do certain events. So if they are performing a function that would normally be a county employee function, they need to be uh, trained and, and go through the process of becoming a volunteer. So that way they're covered liability wise. We're covered uh, for liability. And that's, that's the reason why this was brought up. Yes, please come to the mic and.
Your voice is really soft.
We have to record everything. Please come to the mic, please. Sorry.
We, we were kind of reached out to just to utilize resources and maybe opinion or advice. Is that necessarily considered a volunteer of the counties or just equipment and?
If who, if you are reached out to? Who, say that again?
Kind of, I was just reached out to for resources and advice or bringing different entities or groups together to try to put a list together to.
No, I don't think that's what we're talking about.
I think we're carrying away.
No, we're talking about if you're gonna have, you're lining up other volunteers though, to come and help on that day, right? So for example, if they're going to have the privilege to turn on water, turn on sprinklers, or if they're going to uh, be mowing a, a lawn, or if they're gonna be operating a backhoe.
Or moving an arena or a motocross track or whatever it might be.
Carrying bleachers, moving bleachers. Um, that kinda thing, they need to come in. But no, we're not talking about consulting type things, so.
Yeah, like I said, if it's more on your side of the event, it doesn't need to happen. But if it would, if it were things that you would be asking the county to perform, setting up tables, um, running equipment, those types of things. If those are the volunteers, they need to go through the volunteer process.
Do the volunteers case or the background check and the drug screening and the physical work with the county?
Those are paid for through the county. Any more discussion on this Commissioners?
I didn't have anything else.
Okay. Item number eight, consideration of Commissioner's travel budget. Do you want to introduce this or would you like one of us to introduce this?
Sure, I'd love, I'd love to talk about it. So this item is on the agenda because I have reached my travel budget for the year. What that means is I have on uh, on uh, my county assignments been traveling. And in one of those trips, I actually went to Washington DC. Uh, fortunately, while I was there, I was able to uh, how would you say, save actually about a thousand dollars by staying in an Airbnb and um, traveling mostly on my own expense when it came to taxis and airfare. I think I had one taxi with the county credit card and other things. Um, but in doing so, in going to Washington DC to learn about these opportunity zones, so that we could submit a adequate contiguous track um, to the governor for our area, um, that, that pretty much expends the uh, the rest of my travel budget for the year. Our travel budgets are all equal, thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, that's down from once upon a time, they used to be fifteen thousand each. Uh, but through the, the last little bit, oh, five thousand, says, says fifteen thousand total, thank you. I was getting confused because uh, some of the other counties have much larger budgets than we do. But anyway, um, understanding from five thousand under thirty-five hundred, um, I need to continue forward. All the traveling I do for the county needs to come out of my own pocket or we need to request for an amendment to the travel budget. And I'm actually fine either way, Commissioner Hopes and Commissioner Potter. I would be happy to pay my own way and, and travel on my own dime next week down to St. George for the UAC meetings. Um, but if it is a county expense and there is a return on investment for what I do, you know, it is also justifiable that we could amend the budget and increase that travel expenditure.
This kind of a budget amendment would have to be advertised well and.
This kind of a budget amendment would have to be advertised well in advance. I believe it's seven days. And a consideration, I guess the thing that I would like to see before we do that is, really, what are your plans for travel? We all know where our meetings are. We all know what those expenses are. We agree that it would be, I know that you, you know, continue to say, hey, this is because of going to Washington DC. And from the governor's rural partnership board meeting, I understand that you have maybe been able to help us a little bit, but that information was already out there. You made a choice to go because you were invited by NACO, the National Association of Counties, to go and be a participant in that. And so there are some personal responsibilities that go with our travel and when we go and when we don't go.
Yeah, yes, exactly. And, uh, since you brought that up, there is another Washington DC trip, um, later for NACO. Um, since I do sit on their steering committee for economic development and workforce services, um, which, again, I'll be paying for personally, or we could put it into the budget. It's, uh, something that does benefit our community. Um, I don't just go to meetings. A lot of these county meetings allow you to take your spouse, significant others, or, or families. And I have not once in, in the three and a half years taken my wife to any of these events. I have always gone to work and to only do work and not recreate. And, um, when I do go to these events, I participate. I'm not a fly on the wall, but I do bring back home things that can help us. Otherwise, I don't go, um, which is easy for me with my schedule. I always have two or three events on any given day. So, um, I, I think that it, NACO and UAC events are very worthwhile for our county, that we should have a larger presence within the organizations. I think that it would bring more to our area. For that very reason, I also sit on this, uh, on various state boards. And I do that because what is the rest of Utah doing that is so good, and how can we do it as well? Um, and I've been able to bring that because I sit on the State Department of Workforce Services. And I, I won't take all the credit for it, but i- in, in large respect, you could say, because of my presence on these state boards, uh, our local DWS was the first one in the state to have the one-stop-shop certification. And will be the first one in the state to have the career pathways board organized, a- as well as several other organizations that I, um, serve on, that no commissioner from Carbon County has ever served on. Um, but because of my presence, we are getting a return on our county dollar in regards to those, those travel, travel dollars expended in my being a part of that.
And I think we could all echo that same respect because we all sit on boards. We all travel. We all have that responsibility, once a budget's set, to make sure that we're trying to meet that. I know that's been more than one time the discussion for tonight.
Commissioner, really, the reason why I wanted, wanted this on the budget, or on, on the meeting today is because if you're, if you're asking for amendment to your travel budget, you need to present an amendment to the travel budget. You're still traveling, you're still submitting reimbursements, but we cannot pay those out until the budget is amended.
Which is, which is fine, I understand that.
So, put your travel request together for the rest of the year, a- and, and we've had this conversation, and, and we've yet to see any action on it, and so this was the next step.
Very good. Now, I would also say that I think that this item on today's agenda was more to put me in bad light than to actually discuss. And I say that because in our discussions, you said prepare something for May. And so I have something prepared for May. You know, and, and we can't make a decision until it's advertised in two or three weeks out, yet it was put on today's discussion by the chair who controls the agenda. And so I just wanna point out that I would love to work with you and do everything you're asking. I haven't not done that. Um, as far as submitting travel reimbursements, um, I will continue to keep a record and a registry of my travel, if in case it is approved to amend it. Um, that just makes sense. I, I shouldn't just bring receipts all at the end. Um, but I'd love to continue to work forward. I'd love for the county to continue to see that when I do travel for the county, I do bring something back. Um, but regardless, um, I, I, I think some of the, the roles and the positions that I sit on, whether it's me giving back to the county through donation of my time and travel expense, or, or, or just me being out there and being supported by the county to do it, uh, I, I think we'll have the same result.
Okay. You, you, it's not worth debating here. Um, that's, that's what needs to happen, is you need to prepare a budget, um, so it can be amended or approved for an amendment. Um, there, what you had asked us before was to just take it out of economic development. We cannot do that without having, uh, a budget amendment a- and going through a formal process. So it was not to paint you in a bad light, we just weren't getting answers. Item number nine, uh, presentation of Utah Division of Wildlife Resources, uh, twenty seventeen in lieu of tax payment. Chris Wood, thanks for being here.
Yeah, good evening. Um, I'm Chris Wood. I'm the regional supervisor for the Division of Wildlife Resources. Um, I come every year, uh, usually earlier in the year than this to present our pilt payment. Um, I was here last year too to talk about a property acquisition. I think the last time I was here, I was one of the more interesting agenda items. Tonight, I, my goal is to be with the most, most boring agenda item we have tonight. So we'll see if I pull that off. Um, just real quick, um, I'm here to deliver a pilt payment in the amount of, uh, six thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and seven cents. Uh, pilt is payment in lieu of taxes. And so in Carbon County, we as an agency own.
Should be an uptick because you bought more property in the county last year.
And I'll explain that here in a second. Um, we, here in the, the, the county, we do, um, have a total acreage of al- almost twenty thousand acres. Um, we own twelve thousand acres at Gordon Creek, our Gordon Creek Wildlife Management Area. We have two thousand six hundred and seventy-five acres at our Cold Spring Wildlife Management Area. And then, uh, we have, uh, seven thousand acres at Lower Fish Creek Wildlife Management Area. That's a five thousand acre increase, fifty-five hundred acre increase over last year. As you know, in two thousand seventeen, we acquired that additional fifty-five hundred acres from Ag Reserve through a purchase. Um, we paid a fair market value for that property. Um, part of my letter that I'll be delivering today explains some of the taxes behind that and the payment that we've given the county already. Um, it says that, um, we acquired additional acreage in Carbon County in two thousand seventeen, for which us and the seller paid a combined green belt rollback, rollback taxes in the amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty cents. So, um, it's my understanding that when a property goes out of green belt, you have to pay the back taxes of what the, of those, of, uh, the savings that you were getting because it was in green belt. Um, it is out of green belt, um, through that, that purchase agreement. And, um, we will, in the future, be paying pilt on that, that acreage. So we, we and the seller paid that check to the county. Um, and then for two thousand seven, we also paid ten thousand, uh, and thirty-nine dollars and forty-two cents, which is, uh, the market value of the property for those acres for two thousand seventeen. Um, we won't be paying the pilt or the payment in lieu of tax on those acreage for two thousand seventeen. We'll begin that in two thousand eighteen because we paid, uh, the property taxes for that piece. So, um, I just wanted to point out too, uh, these lands, twenty thousand acres that we own in Carbon County are for the residents of, of Carbon County and for the public. Um, we value these lands. They're great places for people to recreate. They're open lands. Uh, there's great access through most of them. Um, there's walk-in access to a few of them. But, uh, we, we have sportsmen, fishermen who use these properties quite heavily, especially our Gordon Creek Wildlife Management Area is a very, one of the best places people love to go recreate here in Carbon County. And, uh, we, these properties were acquired with funds that were used from, uh, sportsmen and fishermen. And so, uh, we, we manage these properties for them and for the general public. Um, I also wanted to point out that we have, we appreciate the partnership that we have with Carbon County. I think of all the things that we've done together in the last few years and will continue to do for years to come. The great Carbon County pond that we have at the fairgrounds and the partnership that's there. Um, we have a lot of community events that we, we host, and, and certainly Carbon County supports that and, and partners with that. Um, we have a, we have a, an event for the special needs kids, the Fishing Day in June, that we partner with you guys on. Um, and then we, we appreciate the, the partnership that we have with the sheriff's office, um, with our law enforcement officers as well. So, um, and just recently, I, um, we partnered with your roads department and your, um, and your maintenance staff to remove beavers out of an area that was causing some damage. And we removed them to, uh, a place where they'll be much happier and not cause any damage. And so the communication's been re- really good the last few years, or as far as I, I've been here, it's been really good. And so we appreciate your partnership.
How many beavers did you trap?
We ended up catching six. And so they thrive as families. And so we, we were trying to catch the entire family, and we provided the traps, but it was your crew that was actively checking the traps. And when they'd get them, they'd bring them us, and we'd quarantine them for forty-eight hours before we released them. And actually, we brought them all together for two weeks, and then we released them all together, so.
Well, and in reality, we worked with some of the residents down there as well. They checked the traps, and they would call us and tell us when, so we didn't have to travel there every day. So it was, it was a partnership of a whole lot of people, but appreciate your help in that.
Yeah, that's great. And that's basically all I have. I can answer any questions if you have any, but we, we appreciate you, and I'll deliver the, leave this check with you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do.
Item number ten, review and possible approval of a cooperative, uh, cooperative agreement for Utah State University, Utah State University, uh, for services, Ellen Surfestini. I wanna make sure I read that in right, because it's not USUE, it's USU that we're contracting with.
Yeah, well, you put that in the minutes, that it's USU Extension, not Eastern Extension.
Yes.
Nothing to do with USU Eastern, other than we're in the same umbrella in Logan, so.
That was my bad.
That's alright.
So, it's clarified here, everybody's on the same page.
Alright, um, I'm assuming you've looked over the contract?
I have.
Any questions that you have on that?
Commissioners, this is the standard agreement that comes to us every year in regards to the extension service. Uh, we'll have some minor changes from now or from time, and again, sometimes it pertains to the budget, which is passed through us, but, uh, other than that, I didn't see any other changes and would make a motion that we approve.
We have a motion?
And a second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Great, thank you.
Item number eleven, I think you'll just stay there, update on Utah State University Eastern Extension. Well, is this, this is Utah State. USU ex- extension.
We, we get their bills all the time and they get ours, but, yeah. Um, we just wanted to take this opportunity to kind of update you, um, on some of the things that Extension has done. Me being the Family Consumer Science Agent, and Steve is the Agricultural Agent. Um, I'll start with the last, what, three months. Um, we have done, um, classes for, of life skills for foster kids that are aging out of the system, that, um, um, they're like sixteen, seventeen years old, and these are life skills that they need to be productive citizens when they're on their own and totally out of the foster care system. So that's been going on for twenty years. We've, we've done that for, um, DCFS. Um, we have commodities classes that we work in ju- conjunction with the food bank to, um, teach meal prep and, um, cooking skills to low-income audiences that use the food bank, um, how to use the commodities that they get in the food box, and, um, they get an extra box if they come to the class. But it is also open to other, um, people in the community. So, um, we have a good following with, um, those in active reentry, and it's one of my favorite classes. So, um, anyway, meal planning, um, and food prep with, uh, Circles Program, if you're familiar with that, in intergenerational poverty, um, we teach, uh, meal prep and, uh, cooking skills to them. Uh, Love and Logic Parenting Classes, we've done a series there, um, how to avo- how to avoid falling for a jerk. Those are relationship classes and, um, for adults and teenagers, dating teenagers. Um, we just finished participation with the USU Women's Conference with USU Eastern. Um, we do that every year. We've done farm fill days every year with conjunction with the Farm Bureau and the, the high school FFA. I finished last year some research on a grant that, uh, Utah State gave us for, um, research on electric programmable pressure can- cookers. And, um, the instruction booklets are written for sea level, which doesn't help Utah very much. And the safe processing times are not correct unless you read the fine print that says adapt them for altitudes. So we did a lot of research on that, and we just finished safe times for those. And then we just received another grant to do research on the insta- instant pots that are so popular right now. People are canning in them, and they're not recommended for canning. So we wanted to do some research there to get safe, to see if that was safe, so. Um, as Family Consumer Science Agent, it might seem a little different to you, but yeah. Um, this summer, we're going to be focused, I'm going to be focusing mostly on, um, youth with the four H program. So we're teaching several week-long camps on sewing and cooking through popular demand with the public. And, um, we usually have waiting lists on that with kids that are raring to cook. So, um, we're glad we have that facility now. Thank you. Um, let's see, I supervise a nutrition assistant who is, um, teaching low-income audiences and working with a lot of agencies throughout the county to, uh, teach meal prep and, and meal planning and cooking skills and things with people who are food stamp eligible. So, um, that is a grant from the university that, that targets those, uh, audiences particularly. Doesn't mean that others can't participate, but it targets the food stamp eligible audience. Um, the four H aide that we, one time money came from the university, and we combined our four H, our seasonal four H money with it to enable this person to be part-time all year long. She has just been phenomenal in the last few weeks. And, um, I think we will be able to triple our, um, maybe even quadruple our, uh, participation in the four H program with, she's come up with twelve new leaders that are, uh, pretty much ready to go for the summer. And, um, she also is, uh, over a teen council that is very, very active in teen leadership things. And, um, they've been through training, um, through grants through the state that, um, are teaching these kids how to come back and teach other kids for leadership positions and, um, even dealing with the opioid, opioid epidemic. Um, they'll be teaching the danger of that to, um, youth. I think this summer it is, May or, May or June. Um, they help, the teen council also helps plan a lot of our four H activities of the service and the four H camps and some of the activities going on there. So it's a great opportunity for this teen council to, to, um, shine in leadership. They are some awesome, awesome kids. Um, other than that, um, ju- just heads up for some of the things that we're doing. If you have any questions, I'm gonna let Steve cover his agricultural.
Commissioner Miller, I think, has a question for you.
Yeah, just real quick, um, those, uh, the grants that you received and the studies that you did with the pressure cookers and everything, do you have that published somewhere?
Um, the ones that we finished last year, we do. Yep, they're online.
Okay, just look for.
Yep.
The university with no eastern.
With no eastern, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, they are. And we will, that's one of the requirements for the grants, is that you publish on it too. So this new one that we're doing will be published also.
Thank you.
Ellen, let's also sit down soon and talk about August.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, commissioners? Um, so, just a few things that I, I wanted to make you aware of that, um, I've done on kind of the agricultural side of things. Um, so we've just finished up our master, master gardener series. Um, so we had really good attendance. Every chair in the office was in use for, for a night. So, um, we, we were able to get all the specialists on campus to teach most of those. So they donated their, their time and their mileage to come teach those classes. Uh, we got really good positive feedback, and as part of the master gardener program, there are, is a volunteer component for them to get their certification. Um, so actually, a few weeks ago, we had twenty, twenty-one pe- people hours worth of volunteer time to help the, the food bank, um, with their community garden. So that was great to see. Um, as Ellen had said, we, we, um, co-sponsor a farm fill day for area third graders, um, with Farm Bureau. And our livestock club, 4H livestock club is part of that. Um, and so, between that and some of their other service projects, um, so far this year, they've, they've donated about a hundred and forty people-hours, um, in volunteer service. Um, and, so, more of the kind of ag- agricultural side of things. Um, I've, I've been able to actually procure over eighteen thousand dollars so far in grant funds to, um, to do research. So this is, these are going to be projects that, um, better enable forage producers in our county, which support the livestock industry, to, um, have, uh, um, more economically sustainable production.
That's wonderful.
Um, so those are a few things that I have. Um, and we, we are bringing some other workshops to the county. Specifically, two of them that I'm, um, involved in are, are regional programs that haven't been taught here before. And these are aimed towards grazing, so pasture management, as well as other, um, grazing, to help, help those, uh, producers as well. So, that's just a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Oh, before you go, Steve, um, I was just gonna mention, I sit on the AOG Board, and I know that they coordinate with you, with the food bank, and with everything else that's going on. Um, they are also looking at some grants. And if you need help with writing grants, they can be a great resource in maybe coupling different grants together to help some of your projects. So make sure, make sure that you're communicating with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that concludes our agenda.
Make a motion to adjourn?
We are adjourned, thank you.